I so much respect.
Alright, so um we're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the uh regular business meeting of the Board of Education to order. If I could ask everyone to stand please and do the pledge of allegiance. Alright, good evening everybody. If I could ask for a roll call please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Basses.
Here.
Alex Deli-Holly.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Jerry Lunsford here.
Alan Maurer here.
Bill Ratser.
Here.
Okay, so we have everybody. Great. Alright, so the agenda this evening. We will first have a public hearing to consider a proposal to waive school holidays. There is then a brief president's report. We'll have updates. This is the final update? One more after this, right? Okay. Next, the final update from this group of student board representatives, which we look forward to. Superintendent's report. We'll open it up for public comment if anybody would like to speak. We will approve the consent vote agenda, have updates from program and personnel, as well as facilities and finance. No update on property. CEDOL, brief update?
Yeah.
Okay. And nothing from the Illinois Association of School Boards. We will be convening an executive session this evening. And I believe we will be taking action at the end of that executive session. And that should be it. Okay? Alright, anything else? Okay. So we'll begin um. So we'll begin, I declare the public hearing to consider a proposal to waive school holidays open. And I'd like to read this proposal. Notice it's hereby given that the Board of Education of Community High School District Number 128, Lake County, Illinois, will hold a hearing tonight during the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock for the purposes of taking testimony from educators and parents regarding the proposal to hold school. Scheduled teachers institutes, conduct parent teacher conferences, or conduct staff development in-service activities on the second Monday in October, that's Columbus Day, on November 11th, that's Veterans Day, on the third Monday in January, which is the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr., on February 12th, the birthday of President Abraham Lincoln, and the first Monday in March, which is the birthday of Casimir Pulaski. The persons honored by these holidays shall be recognized through instructional activities conducted on that day, or if the day is not used for student attendance on the first school day preceding or following that day. In addition, a moment of silence will also be taken to recognize veterans of foreign wars on Veterans Day. So at this point, I'd like to take educator comments on this proposal.
This uh this proposal allows us to some flexibility in our calendar where we have the opportunity to hold classes or parent institute days, institute days, as you mentioned. So it allows us the flexibility to schedule our entire calendar by giving us flexibility on those days. So in the past, it's been very rare that we use one of those days, but we are going to use one day next year, for example. So the proposal, so we support that proposal.
Okay, so the proposal is not that we would be in service or in attendance in these days, it just gives us the flexibility to do so should we so choose. Okay?
And as part of the con- as part of the calendar process, you're approving the calendar every year, and if we have to amend it, you're amending it. So we would be bringing, if we recommended that we waived a holiday, that would be part of our calendar proposal with the rationale, so the board would still, you know, have the option to vote on it. As Denise has pointed out, who's kind of our historian.
And we would make the decision on a year-to-year basis if we were gonna, you know, hold school, any or hold any activities on those one of those days.
We used to have to do this like every five years. We had to renew this, and the legislator had to weigh in on all of these. It was probably not the best use of legislative time. And so now this becomes more of a Denise, would I be correct in saying permanent? More of a permanent for the holidays, and then the local entity can weigh those options out as Alan has played out as one of the hard normal calendar process, and we're not subject to having to go back and asking every five years if we can do any or all of them. So they're all there, and you know, we got the ability to work with you to take some, all, none of those as part of calendar process.
Okay. And the current thinking is you may take one. Is that right? Great. Which one? Do we know?
Which one's for next year? Which one is for next year is that scheduled? Is it Casimir Pulaski, I believe?
Yes, yeah. Okay. Alright. Okay. Any other comments from the educator side? Alright, are there any parent comments or testimony? Alright, seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Alright, next, president's report. I just have one item. The Lake County Clerk's Office will canvass the votes from the April 9 election on April 25th, and will transmit results via email to the district office. We, the school board, must hold a special meeting to accept the canvas of the votes, seat new members, elect officers, and establish a time and place for regular meetings before May 7. So what that means is we need to schedule a special meeting to get that done in time. So I have a list of possible dates. Those would be Monday the 29th, Tuesday the 30th, Wednesday the 1st, Thursday the 2nd, or Monday the 6th.
Although we would vote not waiting until Monday the 6th. Personally, I think Denise and I would vote not waiting until the 6th, if we possibly can, just in case there's a ripple in the water someplace. Yes, a very bad pun, Alex. You're right, I'm sorry.
That is actually a very bad pun.
Yes, it's been a long few days.
I have no issue with any of those. I don't know if everybody else, anybody else has.
Is there any other activities that happen to happen on that particular day?
Well, we have to, we have to, the board will meet when we canvass the vote, then we'll do send day, right Denise? So the current board will meet, and then basically you'll adjourn your business. So that board will be disbanded. We have to seat the new board, and then we have to do oath of office and officers. An election of officers. And our meeting schedule, which, you know, I'm sure that you're probably going to be about the same as we've been.
When are you expecting to get the email?
The email will come out on the 25th. I'm sorry. Yeah, 25th. So the earliest we could meet is Monday the 25th.
First and the 6th are the only dates that will be made.
First and the 6th. The 6th is, alright, so what about the 1st? Is there any? Any other comments?
Not for me, not for you, or the 6th.
Saying that's the difference.
So we'll get.
Well, actually, the 1st will work. First will work, not the 6th.
Okay. Anyone else? Alex, you alright?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll shoot, we'll do the 1st. Alright, perfect, thank you. I don't think it'll be, it'd be an hour or less.
Yeah, it'll be an hour or less. That's our only business set.
You can do it in early evening, 5:30?
You want to do 5:30?
It's fine by me.
I'm there for 5:30 on schedule.
Actually, later is probably not there, but that's okay. I can do it. I can make any of those work. It's holding Wednesday. I can do evening or afternoon services.
How about 5:30?
Work for all of you?
Yeah.
Jim, can you make that work?
Alright, great, thanks.
Oh yeah.
Alright, 5:30, I'm sure we'll keep it real.
We're district office here.
Let's do that.
We need a district office. Okay.
We'll do the district office.
District office, 5:30.
We'll, we'll report the results or whatever we come up with at the next recording session.
Right.
Alright. Reports from our school board representatives.
Okay, so at Brandon Hills, we've been super busy this spring, like usual, especially with graduation and prom coming up for the seniors. As far as sports go, well, there haven't been too many going on with this weather. This week hopefully is just starting to improve. It was pretty nice out, but I know softball's only had like three games maybe outside. So scheduling has been pretty tough, but hopefully it's gonna improve. And then in track and field, we've had a few records broken this year already from both boys and girls in pole vault and 300 meter hurdles. So congratulations to them. In fine arts, our spring play is in two weeks. It's coming up pretty quickly. It's called Almost Main, and I encourage you to go see it. It's comedic, and it's supposed to be really, really great. Also, the choir had a spring concert last Thursday, and that was featured songs from around the world. So that was really fun. So lots of music things going on. We have, we have our cabaret concert coming up, and also a all-new, all-a-cappella concert, which is completely student-run, student-directed. So that's supposed to be a lot of fun as well. And there's been a ton of student activities going on outside of just sports and music. For example, we had Mr. Cougar last Saturday, and that was amazing. It was very successful. Our auditorium was completely packed, and the 10 guys who competed and performed did a really, really great job. And our winner was Josh Cosglaz. Congratulations to him. And his talent was teacher impersonations, which always gets huge laughs from everybody. From the senior side, we have been doing a ton of things to get ready for the end of the year. We are filming our senior video tomorrow, which will debut at our Honors Day Assembly. And we've been planning prom, which is coming up in less than a month. Our theme this year is A Night at the Oscars, and we have a red carpet and everything. So everyone's gearing up for that. All the girls are getting their dresses and everything. Also, on the academic side, juniors have their PSAE testing tomorrow. So good luck to them. Personally, I will be sleeping. But we know how important these tests are. We all did it last year, so we wish them the best. And also, our Y's team competed in state a few weeks ago, and they ended up second down at U of I. So much success there. And then overall, I think the seniors are really pretty ready for graduation. We're down to the wire, and once we get past the AP test, which are coming up, I think we're all very ready for graduation, and we're very excited for the end of the year.
Thanks.
Okay, so Libertyville is just as busy. Spring sports teams are happy to finally be outside on nice days like today for their practicing games. So far, it looks like the team to watch is boys lacrosse. I believe all three levels, freshman, JV, and varsity are currently undefeated, which puts them second in state. The spring play, Much Ado About Nothing, is this weekend and is sure to be a hit. Early May will be full of several final performances of the year, such as a dance recital, choir concert, and a band concert. And student council, due to unexpected flooding unfortunately, the Mr. LHS pageant that was scheduled for Friday had to be postponed, and we're working hard to pick a new date for the show. Voting for the new student council executive board began last Wednesday, and will close this Wednesday. On Wednesday, May 1, student council will be sponsoring our spring blood drive, which with new extended hours, from 7:00 AM all the way to 7:00 PM, student staff as well as community members may donate blood and save up to three lives. And prom, our prom theme is Suit and Tie, which is a 1920s theme that seems to have everyone excited, and will be held on May 18. It's hard to believe that that is only a month away. And same with Brandon Hills, seniors are happy to be able to sleep in tomorrow, but with AP test right on the corner, it's safe to say AP students will be hitting the books hard the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, so three weekends ago, the LHS team also went to the Y's competition. We got the wild card to go there. It's for academic challenge, and we had three individual medalists, and the team itself took fifth overall. So congrats to them. Relay for Life was two weekends ago. It's a 12-hour overnight lock-in at the Libertyville Sports Complex sponsored by the American Cancer Society, that only students from LHS, VHS, Mundeline, and Carmel are eligible to attend. And so this year, over 500 students signed up, and they raised over $70,000. That money goes to the American Cancer Society, which they then redirect for everything from research to giving patients rides to and from treatment. Then the same weekend was the Model United Nations Last Conference at Northwestern, but because it's so close, in years past, it's been used as a conference to get newer members, more experience, and just ease at the conferences. So everyone that went, they had a great time. They learned a lot. And then this past weekend, day before yesterday, was the Science Olympiad State Competition, also at U of I. Six students placed top four in their individual events, which gave the team a seventh-place overall finish. So congrats to them. And I think that concludes this in report.
Good, very good. Thanks, everybody. Okay, superintendent's report. Dr. Lee.
Well, as you might have heard, we had a little problem at Libertyville High School starting on Thursday. And it has been very, very intensely busy at LHS, and attempting to support and work with the building at district office. As the board knows, we've been providing you updates as we received more information. We have another day of activity today, and Yasmin did a very nice wrap-up at the end of the day, so we would ask she and Jess to give us an update. But I will punctuate and announce on behalf of the students there that they will be able to park at Libertyville High School tomorrow. And I'm sure that made Marina a hero today when she made that announcement.
Hear the cheering in the halls?
A little dancing, maybe, not cheering, but yeah. So anyway, Yaz, do you want to take us forward from the point that we're at now?
Sure. Last week, we contacted our insurance company, Co-op Click, to assist us while we were assessing the damage that had happened in the sub-basement due to the flooding. At that point, two of our representatives from Click came to the school district. Mike and Chris and I know Chris very well, as I work with him very closely, and both were here to assess what was going on. And in the process, they indicated that initial conversations with us did not lead them to believe that we had as large a problem as it turned out to be, once they were here. So they deployed all their resources, and we started out as soon as we found out that there was oil in the sub-basement, in contacting an environmental group to assist in cleaning the basement. Services of Environmental Group Services Limited were retained, and these costs are going to be paid by our insurance company. And what they did was they installed negative air machines in the sub-basement, so the air inside could be forced outside, thus dealing with the odors that were in the basement. They also determined that since the area was confined around the elevator pit and the elevator control room, those were the areas that needed to be addressed right away. Because the areas were, had oil in them, they retained the services of Celtic Environment, and they have been working on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They were there today, too. And when I stopped by to see them earlier this morning, they indicated they were hoping to finish by the end of the day. If not, they would be here tomorrow, just to kind of finish up what was going on. Once that cleanup is done, then the services of Belfour USA is, have been retained, too. And they are the ones who are going to move, relocate, or dispose of all the items that were in the basement. What they are going to do is they're going to look at items such as the desk, the chairs, things like that, to see whether they can be cleaned and salvaged. If not, they will take care of disposing of those items. As they dispose of the items, they are providing the manpower as well as the dumpster for this. As they dispose of the items, they're going to make a list of what is being disposed. Once we have been provided with that list, we can move forward with replacing those items and be reimbursed for it. The only thing we would not be reimbursed for is our deductible, which is $2,500. They've indicated that this will be a pretty time-consuming project that they will be taking on, because everything in the basement will have to be looked at. It would have to be moved manually and be dumped. So we ask the patients from everyone involved as they try to replace some of the items, because we do not know what items will be cleaned that we can probably, you know, reuse again. We will also, we've already addressed some of the items that were damaged. For instance, all the copy paper, copier paper, which is also used in our printers, was down there. So we have started buying that paper, because that was totally, totally destroyed. There was a lot of supplies in there, especially as far as bathroom supplies and stuff like that, Kleenex, paper towels. Those were damaged, too, so we're in the process of replacing those, too. However, that brings up another problem for us, that as far as storage space is concerned, we cannot use the sub-basement anymore while work is being done in it. So the insurance company has recommended that either we find offsite storage, or we rent pods and put them in our building so that we can store stuff. In the meantime, items that are paper goods or paper itself, we're going to store for a limited time in the old admin building, as those are needed on a pretty consistent basis, and it doesn't make sense to have our people go offsite each time paper is needed. In addition to that, once the area is all cleaned up, is when we will have the people inspect to see what caused the problem. Right now, all we see is a crack in the sub-basement floor, and it's kind of hard to look around it or to do anything there, because all the stuff is kind of just kind of moved to one corner. So once all the items are removed from there, that's when we will know what exactly happened, and what is the cause behind it, and what is the solution behind it. At this point, we've also worked very closely with Public Works to see where the sewer lines are, where they terminate, where they end up. There are some that were capped when we started adding on to the facility, so we want to make sure that those are not compromised in any way. And we are very fortunate that nobody was hurt, as the water came out very suddenly, and everything around in there started to sort of crunch down. Actually, there was an employee there who was very close to have, you know, hurt himself if he had not managed to get out in time. So we are very concerned about that situation, too. In addition to that, we had some switches and a whole set of computer equipment there, which unfortunately was damaged. There were some termination racks in there, and these racks distributed network communication to a number of our rooms, where not only do we have classes, but we also have offices. And right now, those rooms do not have phone service, and to some extent, they do not have wireless connection or hardwire connection. All that was damaged. Now, in order to replace those, we've already, irrespective of what the outcome is, because we need to provide services to these rooms, we have already ordered the network switches that were needed and the wireless access points. But what we are doing is, and this will be a cost at our expense, is that whereas this was initially in the sub-basement, we are going to move it up a level to the main basement floor, so that in case we have a situation similar to this one, we are not dealing with having half of our building or a portion of our building cut off. At this point, the estimated cost, because the wiring was about 18 or 19 years old, it was all Cat 5. And Jim, help me out here. What we are moving to is Cat 6, and the insurance company has basically told us that, look, we only replace similar. We are not going to pay for you to upgrade what you have in the building. So we will have to pay the cost of that, and we just got an estimate that just the cost of the wiring will be $53,000. I do not at this point know how much insurance is going to pay for it, but I think it is critical that we upgrade what needs to be done and move the location from the sub-basement to the basement. And Jim, I don't know if you want to add anything to that conversation?
Yeah, my, my understanding is it's old Cat 5. It's been, category 5 is a type of cable that is no longer really standard and used, so it can't handle the higher speeds that, you know, most of our networks work on at this point in time. So that's run throughout that section of the building. And since it was damaged, it needs to be replaced, and it makes no sense whatsoever to replace it with, you know, basically out-of-day technology. So the Cat 6 cabling, and it's not cheap, unfortunately. That's typically in a project like this, the most expensive is the cable and the labor to install the cable.
They will probably cover the labor to install. Obviously, the fact that removing it from the sub-basement to a basement may mean additional costs, because we are running wiring differently now. But at least they'll cover most of the labor cost associated with it. This is so new that right now, we haven't even had the time to sit down and talk with the insurance company.
And they may do the wiring up to the 5 level.
May, maybe.
And they may have to pick up the gap, like often happens with your homeowners insurance, if you want to upgrade after a casualty event. So we'll see.
But a side point to that is that for the past eight years, I have sat on the executive board of Click, and I have seen a number of claims going through, substantial claims. And I've seen how fast a response and the amount of funds that are given to school districts to correct the issues that are there. So I'm relatively confident that we will be able to recoup most of the funds that we have to put out right now, and we'll keep you informed as to, you know, how much is being spent. Maybe this might be the first time that we may have to come to you and ask you to release some of the contingency funds, so we can at least address the needs in the building and then get it reimbursed, so.
And Yaz, one of the other things, there are a couple of other issues in structural. If you kind of think kind of strategically about this, you've kind of got the hygiene things that Yaz is talking about, you know, the floor strippers and things, keep the building clean, and supplies on a day-to-day basis. And then you have some of the classroom kinds of things, like Yaz is talking, that will impact, so that's one of them. One of the other things is there's a compressor downstairs that runs some of the things in our applied technology. So for example, in the woodshop, where we have the industrial sawdust removal, that's run by that master compressor, the lifts in the auto shop, and some other areas of the building. So that's been damaged likely beyond, you know, repair. It seems like, at least Yaz, I think it's what you guys.
Right, it is, and we are getting a smaller one right now to really get.
To kind of keep us going.
Program going.
So we can keep, so we can keep classroom stuff going the best we can, on a temporary basis, as we, as we look towards long-term. And then I think the, the other issue that's related to moving equipment up and down, if we had equipment that was usable down there, is the elevator, which I'm sure Jess is, and Yaz and are going to talk about. So you've got those pieces that are impacting this, kind of the hygiene, you know, supplies, and then you've got the classroom stuff. And then you've got the structural stuff, which you guys are going to spend a little time on, I think, this evening as well. So Jess or Yaz will let you guys take it away, and Alex can jump in where he wants to.
This happened about approximately 6:10 in the morning, Thursday morning, where there was a loud noise in the sub-basement, which the floor buckled up. There's a crack one to two inches in width, and about 45 feet in length, going north and south. At this point, we're not sure, we're not sure. We're 90% sure that it's a, it's not storm water, but it's something because of the sewer, that smell and so forth. Our brand-new, three-years-ago freight elevator is shot. The controls are pretty well underwater, and that's going to take some time to get that repaired and it's kind of set. It's up on the top. We can't bring it down. We can't do anything with it to move stuff around. So that's an issue. The soil, we're getting a, the soil boring, soil.
Right, yeah. We discussed, one of the items that we were concerned about was the sort of around the school district. We looked at a number of drawings. Unfortunately, it isn't very easy to find asphalt. There have a number of additions to the school. There are a number of drawings all over, and it took us a while to locate some of the drawings that we were looking for. But one of the items suggested to us was also that we should do some soil boreings again. We did some when we built in '76. We did some in 1997. We did some in 2002. And what we have asked STR to do for us is to retain the services of a company in Libertyville that is going to do soil boreings around the school. And at this time, we have about 25 soil boreings that they will do. This will be at a cost to the school district. And, you know, we feel it is important enough for us to do it, so we know what kind of issues we are dealing with if, and I discussed a little bit with Alex today, and he had some great suggestions, which I passed on to. to Mike and SDR to include in the work that is going to go on. And we hope to have that work started, hopefully tomorrow and the day after, and get those soil borings done, and then have some additional information. One of the things that Alex suggested, and Alex, I don't know if you want to add on to what you recommended we do, as we do this sort of work.
The biggest thing is, we have what are called two spring water pumps, and they've been in the boiler room forever, about five feet in a little, I'll call it ante room, on the north side of the boiler room. I noticed that Thursday, they were running flat out, and the water was right at the top, and I thought, okay, that could be attributable to the storm and to a lot of water elevation and hydrostatic pressure. But Yaz tells me tonight that those always run like that, and so there's some, there could be a spring, but more likely, there's some conduit to that point from the lake, and it's important that we, we shouldn't have that happen again. If the water level is right there, and the sub-basement is, I think, about four or five feet below that, then it's been living with some kind of pressure on that slab, and it is, as the water level became extreme, well, that's what finally brought the slab up, and in my opinion, at this point, but certainly a forty-five-foot crack, two inches wide, not said at all. So, I think the important thing is to understand from these soil borings, not only what it's made of, you know, to debunk the myth that it's all sand and that the school is sinking, that's certainly not true, I'm sure. I'm sure they went down to proper footings, to build proper footings, but the important thing, too, is to take a soil sample, and then, while you have a hole, let's find out how much water is coming out of that hole, or at what depth, first of all, what depth is it at, and how much of a source would it be, if you wanted to suddenly start pumping that water out of that hole? By finding that out, we can find out just how, how much of a conduit the soil is from the lake over to the school. And once we know that, including the sub-basement, we're going to add two samples at least to decor in the sub-basement, to see just what that water table looks like. And in my opinion, by the time we're done here, we should have a couple of pretty decent sump pumps in the sub-basement to try to draw that down. And we don't want them to become spring water pumps and run flat out all the time, either, but that's why the surrounding core samples are important, to understand just how porous, I'll call it, the soil is, and then from there, see what it takes to drive that water table down to where we're below slab, and we don't have a possibility of this happening again, or minimal.
At six-thirty in the morning, the water was rising at a rapid rate until about one o'clock. It was up almost to the transformer, which would have given us another set of problems. But from that point on, the water just dissipated. What's the missing equation to that?
It's hard, it's hard to know, but where the, the core samples, the soil sample can tell us a lot, because it's hard to say. People have said something broke, a sewer maybe collapsed, but that just didn't feel right, and that's not going to drive a whole slab in there. That's the groundwater coming into effect, and I don't think a broken sewer is going to contribute to that.
Another issue we had is obviously the parking lot, the northwest corner of our parking lot, that's not too old either, that we redid. In checking that out, it looks like there are some cracks, but we're not sure at this time if that's caused by the flood or just normal wear and tear. That's also going to be looked at, isn't that?
That is correct. Tomorrow, when Click is back here again, they will look at the parking lot also to determine what is the cause of that erosion in that particular area, so that's what we can.
Yes, there's a Saint Germain running under that crack in the sub-basement?
There is, but it's not going in that direction, which the crack is. That's another mystery. It's going, this is a north-south, isn't it going east and west? Yeah, so we don't know why it would have cracked that way.
If you think it's something, that means that Saint Germain is cracking, or something small.
Or it's an abandoned one, and was capped, and the cap, something happened to the cap or something. But I think Alex is right, there's an awful lot of pressure that made that floor buckle like that to come up, and the damage it did to our cages and so forth, that's, I mean, I don't think it's all, do you? All-
No, I don't, and I'm even wondering if it's sanitary, because the last time I checked, low tide or the bottom of the lake, it smells pretty bad anyway, and I'm just wondering if we've actually found any samples to look for, you know, typical coliforms or whatever we might find in actual sewage, because I'm just wondering if the odor is just the odor, and it's perhaps not as, you know, I'm sure there's some sanitary, because we had a couple of toilets get caught in all this.
Yeah, they erupted down.
And that-
We need to figure that out, but anyways, our captain or if we can fix it.
Yeah, this will happen again if we don't come up with a solution.
Something had to have happened to keep the water out of the sub-basement, then something happened where it probably rose up to what, to the water table. That's the same, you know, Butler Lake is the water table that you would find underground. So, that's why it rose and stopped, it probably stopped at the water table. But I don't know what was keeping the water out of the sub-basement.
No, it-
When it did stop, when it did go, and it went up to the-
And that's what happens with soil, or foundation walls, if they're continuous, they might, they might be doing something to really slow the water down, and allow for a gradient of a difference in elevations, because the lake normal level is six-ninety-one, above sea level, I think that's the reference, and the sub-basement is six-eighty-seven.
Six-eighty, six or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and so that's, that's a difference when the lake's not elevated, of four feet. So, somewhere in there, somehow, something was either slowing it down, or the slab was sealed to where it didn't, we didn't see it weaving.
Yeah, I think something, because it's obGlacial tilt, it's probably not, it's probably something artificial that was around the sub-basement. Glacial tilt variation isn't that.
And the drains, the roof drains and so forth, there was, I mean, all of that played part in this, I mean, all of the water that was coming off, I mean, everything hit at once, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and if you think about it, if you think about an eighteen or twenty-foot or more roof drain, if they suddenly stop flowing, and they contribute to the pressure in there, that's, that's literally twenty feet of head, which is a pressure that you'd never see in a storm system typically, so there's a lot. And I, I'm not, I'm not sure that this slab is just going to get patched and we'll move on. This may be a tear up there by the time we're done, and I heard somebody else say that before, but I just have a feeling that, no pun intended, we need to get to the bottom of this.
Was there damage in the storage on the northeast, that softball fields where they had those? It looked, I was running by there today, it looked like the water had been up in that area. Did they lose a lot of stuff in there, too? Put their machine?
No one, no one has said anything to me about that area. Maybe they didn't even look.
No, they were pretty good on the, why shouldn't they?
When we get the spring water pumps in the boiler room to stop working, to stop running continuously, then I feel like we're going to-
And I did talk to Mike Henderson at SDR to say that that is an issue we need to address, as soon as we don't leave the sub-basement project, maybe at the same time.
I think it might just one up here, the other.
Be one or the other, right.
But the studio theater, the swimming pool, and all of that are on the same level. I mean, I, and no problem there, so it's just, this is a mystery.
Well, it's, I think it's a function of how the foundation was built, and just we'll see what those soils will have separate things.
So, we'll need to do more investigation.
Yes, sir.
One of the points we want to make, again, for the public, because there was so much information, particularly on the visual TV, television media, is that our structural engineer has determined that the building is safe for occupancy. If it was not, our students would not be in that area of the building today, so, you know, we had that settled, and that's important for parents to know. It's also important for your, for our students to know, you know, as well. The other thing is, much like these kind of events, when you have them, it really brought out the best in District 128, the best at Libertyville High School. There are just so many people to thank, that we'll have to do that formally at some point, but certainly, you know, all of our Buildings and Grounds team at Libertyville High School, you know, Jess and Yaz, Marina, Eric Moroscher, Ray Alvin, Brian Kelly, the leadership team over there, a number of our ESP staff who, you know, hung around and helped, Sandra Kruckman, some of the other people that stayed around and helped, the support, I think, that, you know, they had throughout the-
They got all the kids out of the building so quickly.
Right, exactly. And today, we want to compliment our students and our parents. I was over there this morning, after I dropped my daughter off very early, because I thought it would be very busy over there, and it really wasn't, and stayed with Marina and her team kind of at the front entrance, and it was, you know, I thought, I don't know what you guys thought, but it, us appeared to be smoother than a normal day, with not everyone driving.
Driving, which is-
Yeah, every, it was-
Yes, I was thinking about it for a minute.
So, that required a lot of teamwork and a lot of patience on students' parts and parents' parts, and so, all of you did your part, and we're very appreciative of that, and it's nice that we're going to be able to be in the lot. We might have to cordon, you know, some parts of the lot off for pods or equipment temporarily, as they're going through everything, determining what we're going to keep, but, you know, we will be able to use the backlot, which will allow the students to, you know, drive again. And I'm sure by today, you're ready to come back to school, even the seniors who are ready to get out of school, probably like, I miss my friends, I'm ready to get back to my activities, I want to go play softball, all of those kinds of things. So, it was really nice, and it was, I think, fortuitous that we had a nice, sunny, and turned out to be a very warm day today, so that's all good. And it finally stopped raining last week. That certainly helped our issue, so.
Not for long.
Yeah, not for long, yeah, yes. So, Yaz, Jess, Alex, Al, Marina, anybody have anything else? And Mary, thanks for your work with our media friends. We have a Tribune reporter here tonight. Everyone say hi to the Tribune reporter.
Hi, Tribune reporter.
So, Mary did a great job working with the media, and working with our social media to get information out, and of course, Marina and Mary are working together to get Alert Now messages out, to make sure that our parents and students knew what were going on, and also to debunk a lot of the rumors that were being fanned by the media, frankly, that were wholly inaccurate, so that was very helpful.
So, was anything in the art room actually even touched damage?
No. No.
No artwork was lost forever?
No. They said we touched-
But was this all under?
Yes, it was all in the sub-basement.
Was art room kind of up?
Yeah, it was all in the sub-basement.
Gotcha.
But they were afraid that the floor went up and-
But they didn't lose their-
They did nothing, yeah.
Okay. Just, you know, you hear.
Right, so it was just a-
I actually heard that LHS was not going to reopen, and all the LHS students were going to Burnham Hills. Like, really?
You got room for them, right, Ellen?
Heard that, at the center.
It would be second shift.
Pretty sure that's not going to happen.
We saw a picture that the kids were shot, where the, did you guys see it? Where the water was going up to the second floor.
What else are you going to do in your day, Ellen?
Yeah. It's a technology-able.
Well, there were some, there were some pretty cool events. There were some students surfboarding out on Butler Lake, and some students decided to go for a swim and send us some pictures, although the water was probably pretty cold, and as Alex has pointed out, pretty mucky, all in all, but I think the students made the best of the day, certainly that first day. So, we will continue to stay on this, we will update the board, obviously, in the community as we get more information, and we're also very appreciative that Alex was available with his engineering background to come over and kind of talk the engineering language with Mike Henderson from SDR, and structural people that come in, and then he's going to continue to kind of, I'm sure, I hope, work with us as we work through the process. This is, this is a problem that only an engineer could appreciate, and maybe a geologist, Al.
Is there anything else we can do from a board perspective, or that we need to do from a funding, emergency funding, anything that, in order to, so you guys can keep moving forward?
I think at this point, we are okay, but maybe at the main meeting, depending on, you know, what the item list looks like. We have differences.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, we can do that.
Your first act of this-
I just want to make sure that you're not waiting on us for any approval for anything.
I mean, we have funds, but it may not be in the right object category, therefore, we'd have to-
Yaz, one, I guess, question for the board as well as us, that you and Jess would probably know the answer to, and that would be, in an emergency situation like this, if we had to do something tomorrow that was over twenty-five thousand dollars, does it allow for emergency expenditures without board approval, if we had to do something like tomorrow to fix something really bad?
Basically, what we would do is, we would call the board members on the phone, and say we have this issue, and just get their support that way, and at the next regular board meeting, we'd take action.
Okay, all right, so.
There is some ability.
Okay. All right, anything else, any other questions? Okay, how about the students, any questions from you guys? I mean, you're, you're our Libertyville students, you're in the building, does that all make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I heard all sorts of rumors, so I'm glad to hear the truth, so I'll always spread the truth around.
Well, I can tell you, when I was right, after having spent an hour and a half on the phone with Jess and the crew, when I came toward the high school, Mary called and, Mary Toddred called and said, hey, are you at the office yet? I said, no, I'm not there yet. She said, when you get there, turn on, I won't name the TV station, but turn on one of the TV stations, because they are reporting that Libertyville High School is on fire, and the building has collapsed. So, that's where we started, and that's what your parents heard on the radio after they dropped you off to school, and that's kind of where it started. So, it was a morning of really trying to get accurate information out, and other media outlets reported that the building had collapsed, was sinking to the sinkhole, and, you know, I mean, it was just, we really heard from A to Z. But again, to compliment you as students and your parents, you followed us on social media, you listened to the announcements that we put out, and you paid attention, and I think once we got through those first media calls, which Marina and her team did a great job of fielding, which raised some concern with people, no, that's not accurate, you know, we really had, you know, very few phone calls based on the information that we had, so it's just chasing down the erroneous information that happens in a, in a news story. That's just kind of the way it goes, moving forward. So, yeah, I'm glad you guys are feeling better about things, and you've got some accurate information, and you're helping us run that down, so. Okay, great. Well, that was quite a report, so you know a little bit of what we've been doing. Of course, in the midst of all that, we just have some outstanding news, as we always do. The following LHS students were named March Students of the Month, Zach Neer, Macy Newbauer, Madeline Anderson, Alex Zelik, Matt McGrath, Megan Gayheart, Chandler Scott, and Isabel Espinoza. As you've heard, the VHHS WISE team won second place in its division at the state tournament held at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. In addition to the team trophy, team members received individual awards in the following areas. In biology, fourth place, Justin Yum; in sixth place, Michaela Kovarinen; in computer science, fifth place, Eric Zhang; in English, fifth place, Justin Song; in math, first place, Justin Yum; and in physics, third place, Matt Tbrezy, and in sixth place, John Hoffman. The team is coached by head coach Josh Ravenscraft and assistant coach Shannon Ettnier. The LHS WISE team finished fifth in its division and in the state competition. Individual medalist at state were Jack Vomruck, third in physics, Tim Lee, fifth in chemistry, and fifth in math, and someone I think we know, Nisha Dufuké, fourth in math and sixth in biology, and nine students contributed points to the team score, allowing the team to take home the fifth-place trophy. Other members of the team were Rachel Bratton, Daniel Hartung, Marcellay Joseph, Eric Klein, Heather Lagon, Kevin Lu, Stefan Markovic, Richard Pan, Sarah Rubin, and Chase Wonderlick. The LHS team is sponsored by Pete Dawson and Dave Kreutz. The following VHHS music students were selected to perform at the University of Illinois Chamber Music Symposium on April sixth and seventh. They were Scott Bass, Kristen Chapman, Suzie Chen, Jennifer Cheng, Helen Deng, Mark Adler, Katie Franz, Anne Ho, Paige Kivler, Patrick Cozon, Jared Cozel, Sherry Lee, Hei Su Lee, Neil McLean, Wu Jin Oh, Sean Reiki, Michael Reiki, Emily Spence, Sam Veron, Jake Visick, Alice Zhang, and Steven Zhang. The students participated in master classes with graduate students and University of Illinois professors, and gave a recital the following day. LHS juniors- gave a recital the following day. LHS juniors Tara Eer and Julia Curry have been chosen to attend the 2013 Illinois Girl State, June 20, June 16th to the 22nd, at Eastern Illinois University. Sponsored by the American Legion Auxiliary, Illini Girl State is a week-long program dedicated to providing training for young women on city, county, and state government. Nine D18, one-two, not, let me start again. Nine D128 students were chosen to have their work displayed in the Student Perspectives Juried Photography Exhibition at the Perspective Fine Art Photography Gallery in Evanston. Photography by LHS students Susanna Kalunga, Alice Zhu, Alexis Lindell, and Laura Andrew. And VHHS students Kylie Niemeyer, Alyssa Burrows, Marisol James, Amy Swartz, and Natalie Martinez will be on display, display in the gallery May 2nd through the 26th. A show opening and awards program will be held May 4th. More than 180 works were submitted for the exhibition by over 60 student artists. Alice Zhu's photo was selected to appear on the publicity posters announcing the show. Thirteen D182, D18 students, artists, received honors in the 14th Annual Four by Five Show, held at Fremont High School in Palatine. Over 35 schools participate in the show with 1,300 pieces of artwork, only four inches by five inches in size. The show will be on display at Fremont from March 23rd through May 1st. The following D128 students received honors in the show. LHS Printmaking, first place, Ellen Kenston. Printmaking Honorable Mention, Aleah Omni. Drawing, first place, Isabella Lesna. Painting, Honorable Mention, Lucy Christensen. Mixed Media, Honorable Mention, Grace Malar. Digital Photography, Honorable Mention, Alice Zhu. At VHHS, Drawing, Honorable Mention, Anne Ho. Drawing, Honorable Mention, Jenny Park. And Drawing, Honorable Mention, Cassandra Sendevall. In Painting, Honorable Mention, Tiffany Doe. Mixed Media, Honorable Mention, Olivia Weaver. Printmaking, Honorable Mention, Anne Ho. Computer Generated, Honorable Mention, Hannah Friedman. And Darkroom Photography, Honorable Mention, Luke Turner. The National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association of America has recognized the LHS Varsity Boy Swim Team as a recipient of the NICSA Scholar Team Award. The Scholar Team Award recognizes teams achieving high academic standards, and is based on the average cumulative GPA of an entire varsity team of 12 or more athletes. The goal of the Scholar Team Award is to recognize academic success in the classroom for entire swimming, diving, and water polo teams, as well as athletic success in the pool. With a team GPA of 3.41, the LHS team received recognition at the bronze level. The team is coached by Bob Grosseth. District 128 Director of Communication, Mary Todrick, has been elected 2013-14 President of the Illinois Chapter of National School Public Relations Association. Let's stop and give Mary a round of applause. Mary, congratulations. It's quite an honor. That's a great group in Illinois, and so, Mary, we're very proud of you. VHHS Head Girls Basketball Coach Paul Bretner was named the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association Co-Coach of the Year. So congratulations to Paul. The newly released book, The Power of the Social Brain: Teaching, Learning, and Interdependent Thinking, includes a chapter authored by VHHS Choir Director Jeremy Little. Mr. Little's chapter is titled, The Seven Habits of Highly Interdependent Teachers. The book gives readers new strategies for more successful, affirming, and productive group work in classrooms and professional learning communities. The District 128 Special Olympians had great success at yesterday's bocce tournament in Barrington. Nine athletes, under the direction of head coach Andy Compton and assistant coach Corey Atwell, qualified for the state summer games in Bloomington. The 16 D128 athletes brought home a total of 11 gold medals, seven silver, 10 bronze, and two fourth-place ribbons. Congratulations to our Special Olympians who brought home the following honors. Michael Ivors, bronze. Eric Catterlin, bronze. Corey Truger, two golds. Eduardo Aguilar, two golds. Laura Steen, gold and a silver. John Survey, two silvers. Trevor Furman, a gold and a bronze. Ellie Goldberg, two bronze. Marie Kaplis, a bronze and a fourth place. Mallory Marvin, two bronze. David Leonard, gold and silver. Adrian Soto, silver and bronze. Nick Zakari, gold and a fourth place. Veni Lakochi, gold and silver. Michelle Shuplee, gold and a bronze. And Austin Yosenhans, a gold and a silver. So congratulations again. And having played our Special Olympians in bocce ball with Dave Clough once, you don't want to go there. They are very, very good. So, that concludes the good news tonight. We have a donation this month, as you will note in your package. We want to thank Mrs. Anna Dra, who donated a Yamaha Clarinet Model 450N to the Libertyville High School Music Department. And as always, we're very appreciative of those donations. The board will note that we had two FOIA requests this month in the packet. And at this point, we will come back to where we started this evening with requesting a motion for a holiday waiver proposal. And I think you have a copy of the motion in your packet. If someone would like to read that, I certainly have the motion here if someone wants to make the motion.
Okay, I move that the proposal to waive the following legal holidays as required under Public Act 96640 be approved. The birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the birthday of President Abraham Lincoln, the birthday of Chasmer Polaski, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day, in order to hold schools, schedule teachers, institutes, conduct parent-teacher conferences, or conduct staff development in-service activities on an as-needed basis.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda tonight is, I have the great pleasure to recommend the appointment of the new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. I'm pleased to make a recommendation to the board this evening for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Following an extensive candidate screening process, four candidates were selected to interview with stakeholder interview teams on Thursday, April 18th. The interview teams included district and building administrators, teachers, and support staff. Following the stakeholder interviews, two candidates were selected for final interviews with me on Friday, April 19th. As a result, I am very excited to recommend Dr. Rita Fisher as the new District 128 Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Rita is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction at Grayslake Community High School, District 127. She has more than 20 years of educational experience, having worked as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Associate Principal of Curriculum and Instruction, Social Studies Department Chair, and Social Studies Teacher in District 127 since 1992. In addition, she has extensive experience as a conference presenter and professional development provider. Rita holds a BA in interdisciplinary social sciences from Barat College, an MA in curriculum and instruction from Barat College, an MS in educational administration from Northern Illinois University, and an EDD in educational leadership from National Lewis University. Rita is highly regarded for her instructional leadership work and positive working relationships with teachers, administrators, and staff to ensure student growth and increase student achievement. She is an outstanding instructional leader, and will be a great addition to the District 128 Leadership Team. And as two quick asides, I've been doing administrative hiring for 22 years now. And I think all of us would agree, this particular pool of candidates that we had for this position, starting with the 40 applicants, was by far the strongest. And our two finalists for the position were two stellar candidates for the position, either one of them who would have done a fabulous job for us. So it was a very, very difficult decision process, and both candidates were amazing, and will continue to do work, good work, where they move forward. The second thing is, I want to compliment our stakeholder interview teams. Again, that mix of administrators, teachers, and support staff. We have many phases in this process, so I get many data points and much feedback back from a lot of different steps in the process. And as always, our two interview teams just did really professional work in terms of assessing the candidate and providing me very usable feedback for a final interview with them on Friday and the final decision-making process. So with that said, we are getting a great Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. We are all very excited on the leadership team, and I know our staff will be too. So with that said, I recommend the employment of Dr. Rita Fisher as the new District 128 Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Guess we'll need a motion from someone.
Okay, I make a motion that we employ Dr. Rita Fisher for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction position, District 128.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye. Banson? Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Banson?
Aye.
Delly Polling?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Longstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This concludes the report.
Very much. Chairperson, Arthur, facility and budgets.
We have four bid recommendations for this evening. First up is the VHS Tennis Court Resurfacing. So, we need a motion to accept the base bid from First Impression Inc. of Franklin Park, Illinois, in the amount of $116,400 for the VHS Tennis Court Resurfacing Project.
So moved. Second. Roll call, please.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
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 Radsor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number three is the Administrative Office Renovations. So, we need a motion to accept the general work base bid from ATP Enterprise Group of Northfield, Illinois, in the amount of $529,000 for the Administrative Office Renovations.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Radsor?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Nelson?
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 Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.[1499.35]